You're gonna get feedback because of me.
Okay. So who do we have here? Marty? Okay.
Mute yourself for now. Mute yourself, Rob.
Okay. Are you R. Hayes? Oops, where did go? Oh, there it is.
Yes, I am.
What was your first name, please?
Eighty North Main Street, Unit 32.
Okay, and your first name is?
Robert.
Robert, okay. Robert, what's your last name? Hayes. H-A-Y-E-S.
Mute yourself, Rob.
Okay. Robert T. eighty? Okay, thank you, Robert.
That's Donna's husband.
Right, yeah, okay.
A thanks to the people that made this first ever hiring meeting happen. And I'm gonna name those people by name. Many of them can't come out because they're running the same piece in the room. But I'd like to say Carolyn Brady, Karen Space, Morris Gray, Bruce Duncan, Ray, uh, Morris Gold, Harry Collett.
Stephen, good evening. Do you unmute yourself, please?
I'm a volunteer moderator. Uh, Ben thirty.
Sure.
Thank you, Stephen. What is your street address, please?
Two one one Kent Cornwall Road.
Would you start the video, please?
So it was kind of boring.
Uh, do I have to start my video?
We have, yes.
I do?
A lot of, um, with that.
Okay. That's the rule, okay.
I'm going to nominate the Carolyn Brady as moderator.
Okay. Uh, what is your address, please?
Mine's fifty-one Elizabeth Street, Kent.
I can't hear.
Can you just say Kent Cornwall Road?
Yeah, Marty was.
Who are you? Yeah, we, we, you've got many, no need for people on, who's it, who's first?
Stephen Shapiro. Even, what is your address, please?
Two one one Kent Cornwall Road.
Thank you. Okay, we have you, please mute.
Okay. Hey, Marty.
Okay, Marty.
Hi, I'm at fifty-one Elizabeth Street.
Thank you.
Marty, Marty?
Okay, thank you, Marty. Would you please mute?
So, because we're so practically, I'm gonna go get the results of being a moderator. Otherwise, we can't continue.
Goodbye.
I'll make that one.
As me as a moderator? Did you hear any votes?
No. We're, we're still working.
Stephen, can you hear your topic? Um, there are five that. Okay, first, if you can mark which one. So, folks on the middle. Can you see the room?
That's a good scan of the room what I've seen on the monitor now.
So we're, we're asking the room via Zoom to unmute and give us a shout out and let us know that you can hear. If you can't hear, please put something in the chat and we will troubleshoot it as we're moving along.
You're good. I can hear.
I can hear.
I can hear. That's fantastic.
I can hear too.
Great.
I hear you.
Okay.
I'm here. I hear you.
So.
I hear you.
Confident that you all can hear us, so I'm gonna put everybody back on mute.
Better turn that down. I'm, I'm.
Okay. Everyone is on mute. I think we're good to move forward.
So, to proceed with the meeting, I'd like to go over the quick housekeeping, even though you probably feel like you've already done a bit of it. Um, naturally, we're asking that all your phones are on mute. I've already told you that made you aware that the microphones are located on the table and be sensitive to your side office. Zoom attendees are welcome to ask their questions in the chat, of which will be monitored and then read aloud.
You need to speak louder. Donna, who's saying? Hi.
So also who are voting remotely, you're doing so, attendants, tent, town attendants accepting your representation that the person voting is who they state they are, and by the after voting, the voter is making that express representation. At the end of each motion, the moderator will announce how the vote will be taken. If necessary, Zoom attendees may be asked to vote via the poll. All questions will be proposed, so they only have the ability to be answered yes or no. You will click on your choices and click submit. It will be gotten through. For each motion, registered voters will report Zoom results to the moderator, and the moderator will announce the combined final results. Immediately following the adjournment of the budget meeting, we're going to ask Zoom attendees that have chosen not to stay for the Board of Finance meeting to leave quietly and quickly. The Zoom attendees wishing to attend the Board of Finance meeting, naturally, it will be a pause to make sure that the Zoom attendees also have that choice to either end their Zoom session or continue to wait so that they can also attend the Board of Finance meeting, which is usually the same length function. Any questions regarding housekeeping? I will now entertain a motion to waive the reading of the warnings. Melissa?
I move to waive the reading of warnings.
May I have a second?
Sorry.
Jim Barret? At this time, I'd like to have the Zoom attendees be unmuted.
So we're gonna wait about fifteen, twenty seconds for people to unmute. I'm sorry. Correct, unmute.
Hi.
Don't give it back.
This is Ralit.
Say that again?
All right. Down now.
Built this business on relationships with people, classic mom and top shop, the unknown factor in all this.
Ah, go away now, come on. The most popular phrase. What the heck? We just said we're muted. Are we sure this is the 21st century?
Snack a lot, Leslie, where did? Yogurt by.
I'm gonna get a. Can't stand this meeting. Can anyone explain what the problem is? I see Darlene.
We can't hear anything.
No, since you muted.
No, it's.
This is ridiculous.
There is no sound from the room coming through.
Motion number one. This is motion number one. I move to authorize the Board of Selectmen or other town officials in accordance with the Kent Policy and Procedure Manual to apply or accept and expend funds or grants, including, but not limited to, town aid road of $500,000 for general remissive purposes for the fiscal year 21, 2022.
May I question the second page? Second, Karen Brady? Are there any questions from four? Any questions? Mike Bobble?
Um, if town aid road, what, what does that is, that says general purposes. What, what, what does it for? Or is it no use that? Or is it just something to add? Whatever, whatever.
Can you repeat your question, Mike? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Can you repeat your question?
It says town aid road grant. That has a, for general purposes. What, what does it come up with? So we're asking for a reward.
I'm gonna ask Barbara to come on the audio. Barbara first.
All right.
I can't really address the question because I'm actually in another Zoom meeting at the same time.
Okay. Can you just have a new address?
Yeah, the town aid road, the annual, kind of true that we have, I'm sorry, the annual, annual expenditure that we have, uh, that comes from state. And so it is for specifically general purposes of, for developmental, very, very, uh, prepared.
Well, it knows, set purpose first.
Well, it is, it's, it's, it's receiving state money, but we have to, we have to approve that, we have to establish a project. And we do whatever you.
I, I don't appreciate that. I don't think we did it on purpose when we asked for a, that, that's.
You'll see in the line items, Mike, that we do have support for the expenditures for the road, a certain amount of it is covered by the state's.
Line two ninety-nine in the budget, I'd like to tell you, is proposed at 291,531. So it will be the second one financially identified for the codes of 21, 22 years. And for sake of my interpretation of this motion, it is to give the authority for us to, to the function of applying for town aid road grant that comes from the state. It gives the authority to the Board of Selectmen and the town officials to represent us for that. More specifically to your question, no, I, I don't know without constantly how I bring it here. I would not be comfortable saying, because I think what you're asking is, is it road aid or B or C, the bridge, and that's not specific here to this part.
I would add, though, that it has never been the case where it's as specific, uh, per drainage, like.
Any other questions from the board? At this time, I'd like to ask all Zoom attendees to unmute yourself, just stay in the row.
Yeah.
All coming off. I think we're, you know, we're gonna get more, we're gonna get.
At this time, I'd like to call for the most, boys vote, all is fair.
All right.
Bye.
Any opposed? And if you notice, I'm not waiting for the results, because now, obviously, we're all in for a brief that we can actually hear, because Zoom lines, in the polls. With that, boys vote, happy. May I, thank you. May I have a motion ready for number two? I, I move to authorize the Board of Education or other town officials to apply for, accept, and expend funds of any federal, state, or other bonds or grants of $200,000 for educational purposes for the fiscal year 21, 21. May I have that, please? Thank you. And then, question from four? With that, I'm.
Sorry?
Too, too close to the limit.
So. So Constance, um, hang on. Constance is asking. Is there anyone who, I don't know why that's feeding back all of a sudden?
The audio is unintelligible.
It's really ridiculous.
Ask again.
Zoom attendees, the question is not on the panel. You really analyze my.
Oh, this is a nightmare.
Remind you to all Zoom attendees that you are live.
Like this, the other device. Barry, is that going to show up as swivel device? Uh, some people are muted, some people are not.
At this time, before the vote is called, I need to remind all Zoom attendees to unmute. An immediate responsibility will be using their technology to the best of their ability to participate in the meeting is unmuted. I'd like to remind you because the motion has been on the floor and it was going to pause, the motion has been asked to be loaded, is moving to authorize the Board of Education or other town officials to apply for, accept, and expend funds on any federal, state, or other funds or grants up to $200,000 for educational purposes for the fiscal year 2021, 2022.
Education.
Ask everybody to unmute. Can you all hear me when I'm talking?
Yes.
Yes. Very well. I sent a chat asking that when people need to speak, they can do it through Jean's laptop. It's very clear.
Doesn't make any difference. So just to let everybody know, on the Zoom, we have multiple devices that we're trying to make sure are working but not feeding back. So we're, if you can just give us another minute. Again, this is new to all of us and we're truly doing the best we can.
And I needed to let it go, let the community own it. And that, that's what really Street Art is all about.
Over the.
I'm sorry.
I'm quite shocked as my mother has seen to it that I am scrubbed to within inch of my life. And this is just silver.
I think I lost the meeting.
Can everybody hear me now?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Much better.
Everybody mute.
So seems we have a, a issue with the swivel audio. So we're going to discontinue using the, the microphones that are at the different places. And if someone wants to speak, we'll have you come up or we can bring the, the laptop to you. If you can just, Rufus or whomever, hit the on off switch and hold it so it turns off. Okay. Can everyone hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
That's better.
Yeah.
Yes.
Hopefully we'll limit this, this feedback.
Again, before recalling the vote, reminder, I move to authorize the Board of Education or other town officials to apply for, accept, and expend funds of any federal, state, or other funds or grants up to $200,000 for educational purposes for the fiscal year 2021, 2022. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passed.
You want to go to poll?
At this time, I'd like to ask for motion number three. Ben?
Stop.
I move to appropriate from reserve funds for capital and non recurring expenditures and amounting to expenditures approved in the fiscal year 2021, 2022 column of the five year capital plan.
May I have a second? In black letter. Are there any questions from the four, or Zoom attendees? Hearing no questions, like to call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. May I call for motion number four, please?
I move to consider an act of profit recommendation for the financing of five year capital.
May I ask for a second? Garrett? Garrity? Are there any questions? Just because there was feedback, I'd like to just repeat that. The motion is to consider and act upon the recommendation of the Board of Finance for the five year capital plan. Seeing and hearing no questions, I'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passed. Motion number five.
I move to consider and act upon the recommendation of the Board of Finance for fiscal year July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2022 inclusive, and appropriate money to the brady expenses of the town in accordance with said budget as finally accepted and established as follows. Board of Selectmen operating budget, $4,158,727. Transfer to capital fund for future projects, $1,1,341. Transfer to dog fund, $7,500. Debt service, $38,906. Appropriations from capital for current year, $936,000. Board of Education operating budget, $4,686,813. Region one budget, $2,509,743. Provo expenses, $13,363,029.
May I have a second? Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion.
At this time, as moderator, I'm asking for the first response to be by our first selectman.
Thank you, Darlene. Can everyone, hopefully everyone can hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you. So I've had, over the last few weeks, um, this has been a, a conversation in the coffee shop, at the transfer station, um, on social media, and there's a lot of, um, just been a lot of passionate talk about budget. And, um, I was talking to someone today and, um, he's sort of giving me counsel on making things right and for the bigger picture. So, um, in the spirit of making things right and doing what's right for the town in this moment, um, I'm going to, um, make a motion to amend the motion on the floor by reducing line 260 civil preparedness by $26,500, bringing the funding back to the current year budget amount, changing the total expense for the budget from $13,363,029 to $13,336,529.
Took wind out of your sails.
May I ask for a second?
I'll second that.
At this time, the discussion that takes place on the floor and by Zoom attendees is to address the most, the amended motion only, to identify if there's any questions or comments to the reduction of that specific line. Any questions or comments from the floor? I'd like, I'd like to recognize Lynn Melis Worthington, please.
I think that if people haven't been following, they might even want to know why that motion
As ma, as moderator, I will ask because the individual who made the motion is our first selectman, I give her the opportunity to ask to answer that question first.
So yeah, Lynn, if you can ask the question.
The question is.
Explain why you need the motion to reduce the amount of civil.
During the budgeting process, there, um, the emergency management brought forth, or I, with the emergency management director and deputy emergency management director, at fourth, a budget of $31,450, oh, thank you, $31,450. The selectmen, um, the other selectmen, how, how would you like to?
We didn't pass it forward.
We didn't pass it forward. Um, there was a lot of passionate discussion about process, um, and it was moved on to the Board of Finance without the item, that funding, and the Board of Finance put the funding back in and we're here tonight. And again, based on the feedback that I've heard, um, that was the, the reason for my motion. I don't see anything.
Any other comments or questions? I'd like to recognize Chris Garrity, selectman.
I'd just like to add to that, that this is, it's, it's a process and procedure. Has nothing to do with the merits, with the potential merits of the emergency service program. It was like a process, unfortunately, we're not able to get timely mannered to, with respect all other people in departments that, that adhere to that process. It was, in my opinion, that, that inappropriate time to hear that. I think, however, it's clear, having come through a year of challenges, that it's something that should be prepared for that next year.
May I recognize Nancy O'Dwyer, Chairman of Board of Finance?
The Board of Finance put this in the budget, I would say, this year, based upon feedback.
May I recognize Matt Winter?
Do you mind coming up?
You need to just come towards the light.
So I wonder how those, uh, how those costs will be managed. I, I expect that, that they were requested to be in the budget because there are true costs and what are we going to do about, how's that money expensive?
I'm hoping that we can, um, there are some very basic costs. It will leave fourth, I believe, $4,950 in that line that has been carried over the last many, many years as a level funded. And, um, my hope is that we can come back to the Board of Selectmen, come back. come back to the Board of Selectmen, come back to the Board of Finance with a more fleshed out plan and possibly get some grant money to help fund at least some of the cert expenses, some of the basic, just operating, running expenses for emergency management.
Yes?
I have a question about infrastructure. Is there, right, do we have enough money for onboard repairs now for the tarmac and for the eyeballs? And improve any lighting system?
So what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask you to hold that question because the questions have to be specific to the motion that's on the floor. And at the budget, once we get through this amendment, there will be time to then open it up for other items to be discussed. I will then call it, you, call on you at that point. May I ask, Joe in the back?
We need people to come up to the front. I'm sorry, we, sorry, we just have to get into that habit for the evening.
So, um, let me understand this. The, um, there was an amount of $31,000 and we voted on the budget that included this. So how is this different now? The budget, some money was switched around to another fund. Is that what happened?
So to just correct your, correct part of your question, that we have not passed any part of that budget. So the only process that's been taken place is that the Board of Selectmen approved a budget of which this dollar amount was not in. It then gets passed to the Board of Finance, at which, at their meeting, they took the appropriate process to put forward a motion second and which the budget then included that full dollar amount to the civil preparedness line. Tonight is the actual process that puts forward to all of us the ability to vote the budget, including or not including that amount. So we have not approved that at all. Tonight's that, that function. Thank you. Anyone else? Ken Cooper?
Notwithstanding Chris Garrity's process issue, given that the title of this is civil preparedness, I would like to ask the Board of Selectmen if not approving this amount of money in any way puts the town at risk.
I would say no.
The answer to that question by Ed Wood. That's okay. Ed Matson? Selectman is no. Chris Garrity may also respond.
I'm not sure, but I don't think so. I think that civil preparedness this year, and Jean at the lead has done a great job at managing the hand that we've had. Simply, we need more money for that. Personally, I would like to explore whether a regional approach might be appropriate. No, who and what and how. There was a recommendation to have stipend. Personally, I don't understand what stipend does in government business. Somebody's got to do. Right. So those are just the questions that a process would normally bring out. So who the taxpayer would be able to say, okay, get it. If I don't get it, I am on clear as paper. If I don't get it, I can't explain it to for a risk, but I don't get this next.
Any one other questions or comments?
I'd like to just answer.
In response?
Yeah.
Jean Speck?
We still have an emergency management director and a deputy emergency management director who are continuing in their positions. There, there's a cert team that is looking after the town when it comes to even the current crisis we're in. I do have concerns. There are basic costs that will not be able to be covered in that line item without any funding. So I do have, I have concerns, but I am, I made this motion to amend in order to be true to Chris's concerns for the lack of process and.
Thank you.
There, there was a question about the previous questions.
Okay. Hearing no other questions or comments, I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed. Are there any other comments or questions about the original motion putting forward the budget? Obviously identifying that specific line now has been approved as amended.
So there were just two items. One came in the, during this amendment. They didn't hear the previous question from the gentleman in the green shirt because we weren't up there. And also, there's a, there's a question from Donna, just as we were all, just as the vote was being taken. Since this is now not a budgeted item, will the care funds be able to be applied? And I, I think, Donna, if you mean the American Rescue Plan, the orders becoming to be known as the ARPA funds, yes, it would, that, that funding that's coming to the towns from the federal government would be able to be used for, to support the funding.
Okay, thank you.
Mike Gobble? Yes, please.
Notice on the, for the library association and the fire department that the increase was requested by both and denied or reduced by the Board of Selectmen and later restored.
All right. So.
I'm going to defer to the moderator.
So at this time, I'd like to ask the Chairman of the Board of Finance to respond first because it was upon their action, those funds were restored.
So, again, in the meeting that I talked about.
Nancy. Nancy, oh, sorry.
Thank you. I'll yell into the screen. The meeting that was previously mentioned, it also came up about the two cuts. One to the library and one to the fire department. And there were a majority of members on the Board of Finance who felt that this was something that should be restored. So that's why it was restored in the budget.
It's my understanding that maybe this money that I had to this question.
Yes, it was. Continuum of services from the ARPA grant could certainly cover that, in my opinion, from everything, because I also deal with that grant. So yes, I believe that that could be utilized and that was my recommendation that.
It added to this budget.
That is correct.
I have one more question. Transfer station. It just says salary for the transfer station. It doesn't say, I mean, is that salary for the manager or is that all salary?
Can you just go to the line? Can you just, down the left-hand side?
It's line 271. So.
And it just says salary. Normally, they thought that it has a salary for the manager and assistants, however you describe it. It's, that includes everybody at that station. Transfer station.
Let me see if Barbara is wrapped up from her other meeting.
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
I think that's.
Also.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. That line includes wages for all people that work at the transfer station.
Right, it's been confirmed by the treasurer, just as we. It's been confirmed that it's all salaries, that which included the manager, the attendants, and any possible individuals that fill in in the event that somebody's called in or called out. Yep, it's all. Bylo, can you come up? Because now would be an appropriate time for you to ask your question. You just have to come towards the screen if you could.
I would stop by that.
Oh, no, 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 not at all. It was, it was perfect timing. So it's okay. So now, if you want, you can even pull your mask down and you can ask your question and we'll try to give it the best to answer.
Okay, for everybody on Zooming, everybody on the floor, I have a question for you guys. What are we going to do with the money if we're going to repair the road and have better lighting fixtures? Because I would raise my concerns that somebody's going to drag an axle on all the cars. If it's not going to be fixed and while I didn't make a collision happen, does everybody can improve this road, work and improve this lighting situation?
Jean, would you like to take that question?
Are you talking about specifically in, in the village or?
It's where the unit savings bank is. It's right where the Kings Boulevard is for the IGA and unit savings bank. And there's like a big crater. I just want to raise my concerns to everybody. If you're driving, make sure you drive with these sovias. I don't want you guys to drag an axle or anything and have a better lighting fixture so we can see better. And that time, especially in the winter time. Those are my concerns.
It's a, it's a very solid concern to bring forward to the community. Just so you know, that specific area that you've identified is a personal property. It's owned by an individual, not overseen by the town. But I think that I can comfortably say that your concern will be brought forward by the Board of Selectmen and somebody will reach out to that individual and make sure that they hear your concerns. We appreciate it.
Thank you, darling.
You're welcome. Thank you. Is there anyone else with any questions or concerns? Melissa Trunisky?
I have your fire request, motion number five, be taken on paper ballot for those here in person and by poll for those on Zoom.
Is there anyone, if everybody heard the motion, it is a request for a paper ballot and by poll via Zoom for the motion that's on the floor. Motion needs a second?
Second.
Than charity? I'll call for a vote for the, this vote is specific to the motion of asking for the vote to be taken by paper ballot. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Nay.
Okay, so. I think that it's comfortable to say that that is, as a moderator, my choice to say that that is not a real solid yay or nay. So we're going to go with my request that we're going to take the vote by hand count. This is only to count for approval of, to do a paper ballot for the motion that's on the floor.
Can you bring me your motion? Can you bring me the motion?
To just take a moment so that we can enter that into the poll so that all of those attending by Zoom will have the ability to access their vote.
Thank you.
Reminder to the Zoom attendees, a poll question will appear on your screen. You will be asked to just identify your vote, choosing yes or no. The Zoom system will tally the votes and provide us for a count at the end of that activity. We've launched the question, so to those in attendance in person, I'd like to say by hand, I'd like to say all those in favor, please keep your hand up so that a proper count can be made if you'd like a paper ballot. If you would take that, the, obviously, we consider, Eric, if you could take from that side of the room where it runs down. Yep, and if you could take this side of the room and count. Hand up please so that you can see it as a yes, or this is a yes. This is a yes. This side only, including this side of the hall. Okay. Those voting no, please raise your hand. Please keep them raised.
Everybody says yes and it's.
You may, yeah, you may put your. And if we can ask, are we all number wise?
Yes.
Okay, how many yeses?
Yes.
Okay. Motion is defeated by 32 no's to 21 yeses. We will then entertain the motion, the main motion on the floor by voice vote. One last opportunity. Mike Gobble? Would you please come to the front of the room? It's okay. I've already given up the fact that I have not run the fastest meeting, so.
This returns back, back to the library. Nothing against them. But it's obvious and well-known that our members of both boards affiliated either both, or either with both or with one of those two. My question is, when the subject comes up in your meeting, those people have to abstain? Stay out of the conversation and stay out of the vote?
Yes.
Or do they, are they included? And did they do so in coming to the?
So, again, only in the anticipation that this question may be asked, I'm going to give you a two-part answer because we never want to disrespect the function of the chairman and any board of commission and the authority that they are given to set guidelines and bylaws and rules for their commission. A conflict of interest is considered a beneficiary of money. So if in the event that they were going to be. So if in the event that they were going to be personally, personally receiving any beneficiary of that money, they should remove themselves as being seen as a conflict of interest. I was provided that definition to be used as a guideline to then identify whether it's seen as a conflict of interest for those individuals to participate in the communication and the discussion and therefore in the actual vote itself. So I don't know if that's acceptable to you. I can just put it forward.
No, I've been to zoning board meetings or maintenance meetings and know that members, both those committees had to abstain simply because they either worked hard for a company that is involved in their project. I don't think they at all care of that. And in a position, they have to push for funding for something that is their capacity.
I'm.
In the best interest, especially when there's.
I'm not in a position to debate the question, but I also want to make sure that everybody else is given the opportunity to respond, respond to that. Anyone else? Chris?
From the Board of Selectmen's position, I have not found, two of my colleagues are actually tied to the fire department. I have not found that there's any conflict. I haven't found that there's any, but I haven't had dialogue and concern. And so from the Board of Selectmen's position, I don't have a problem and have not.
So seeing and hearing no other questions or comments, I'd like to remind you of the motion as amended that is now on the floor. I move to consider and act upon the recommendation of the Board of Finance for the fiscal year July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022, inclusive and appropriate money to defray the expenses of the town in accordance with said budget as finally accepted and established as follow Board of Selectmen operating budget. A transfer to capital fund for future projects, $1,1,341. Transfer to dog fund, $7,500. Debt service, $38,906. Appropriation from capitals for current year, $936,000. Board of Education operating budget, $4,686,813. Region one budget, $2,509,743, with a total expense being $13,336,529. That being said, I'd like to call a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay. That being said, motion passed. I'd like to remind you before adjourning that immediately following the adjournment of this annual budget meeting, the Board of Finance will be, are scheduled to be a meeting for themselves. So please remember to leave, if you're not wanting to attend, to leave quickly and quietly. I really, really personally put myself out to say thank you very much for your patience in the process. Everybody so much.
Thanks, Silver.
Meeting adjourned.
Sorry. Shoot me down. Continue. Yeah. Okay. One more. Fun now. Nice fingers.
Nancy, can you use Jean's laptop? I can't hear you.
Okay, we're calling this meeting to order at 8:31. The only item we have on our agenda is the mill rate. And we are going to be to meet to redo the components of the budget to set the mill rate. So what I would like to hear from you all is your availability. Are you available next Wednesday?
Why can't we set the mill rate?
We can't.
Why?
Because of the other components in the budget. And the agenda simply states that the meeting is to set the mill rate and we can't set the mill rate because it doesn't have all the other component parts that we would need to put into play.
I disagree as well. You can set the mill rate, it's just going to go down.
But we can't have that vote tonight.
Okay.
That is the issue, which is why we will have to have a special meeting because our regular main meeting was canceled.
I don't know why.
Okay. Oh dear. Okay, yes, of course. How about the following Wednesday?
Can I just interrupt that you're getting very close to the building, but I can't touch it because we're not. So the time is up, the essence to get a mill rate set or get mill hour timed for July or July.
Thursday, the 27th? No. Nope.
Can I, and I'm only going to just remind you of another housekeeping function. You obviously, and I don't want to assume you're not aware, you can hold this meeting via Zoom. So that may give you a little bit more flexibility about realizing and recognizing you don't have to travel because of the extension of the executive board.
We've been, we've been meeting via Zoom. We know we have that option. Thank you, darling. Barbara just sent me a text. Barbara, can you hear us over Zoom?
I can. Can you hear me?
Okay. All right, so getting back. I'm going to turn it up so she can.
Well, that didn't very well. I disconnected her power.
Can you hear me?
When you guys are available.
Barbara, we can kind of hear you.
Barbara. So the mill rate can be set with all the components that are in place right now, except the mill rate will go down to 18.57.
Say that again, Barbara.
The mill rate can be set with all the components that are in place right now. The mill rate will go down to 18.57.
Can she text what she's saying in the chat?
I did.
All right.
Because it sets up unrealistic expectations for taxpayers, you know, to have to pay that much more than clothes. We did that last year and we took over $700,000 out of the fund, so I think it would make sense to put some of that back in and maintain a solid mill rate. Because we have not increased the mill rate in years and we probably will have to next year because the revenues are going to go up with the house sales and the building. So I don't think we should continue to set unrealistic expectations for our taxpayer.
So just to be fair, Barbara did put in the chat here, the mill rate can be set with all the components that are in place, the mill rate will go down to 18.57. I just want to make sure of that. Right.
Go down to what?
18.57.
18.
Yeah.
The only thing you can do is delay it.
So did somebody want to make a motion?
Make a motion.
Is there a further discussion on that?
I mean, I think, I think, you know, we all are, we all have issues last year. I'm not sure.
Yep.
I think lowering it for one year, knowing that we are going to, I'm okay.
You do my opinion. Anybody else have a thought?
My first go around, I'm not sure I have a thought.
Okay. All right. How about you, Freya?
I'm uncomfortable with the.
Any other comments?
Can I make a comment? The money the people ran off. I mean, doesn't that just go back to the general fund?
The great money goes back to the state.
Yeah. And spend it on something else.
Only if we have permission to spend it on something else. It's very, very specific as to the things it can be spent on. Okay, I'll call the vote.
Can I make a comment?
All in favor?
18.57.
Yeah. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Principle.
Do we have to not read?
We left him laughing. What can I say? It didn't adjourn, right? No. So can I have a motion to adjourn?
That's my excuse.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Jim, at 8:38. I think that's the fastest one we've ever had. Seven minutes.
There you go.